To the flag, the United States of America, and to a republic which stands one nation and fair in the mistletoe, with liberty and justice for all.
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented. Oh wait, with one amendment, got corrections for spare language was discussed prior meeting.
Yes, I will second that and all in favor? Have an announcement, in addition to announcing that the next board of select residents' meeting would be Monday, July 22nd at 5:30 at the West Bath Town Office. This announcement that comes to us from the main Department of Transportation. The much anticipated culvert replacement on the Berry's Mill Road at the Mill Pond will be starting in mid-July, and that is as accurate a date as we've been given. The work will require a detour, and Mba has said that it plans to install message boards on State Road starting next week, which is this week, to provide advance notice of the detour to the traveling public. And once the construction dates become firm, we will be provided with an update. So these, this should be starting soon, or about mid-July.
And this is, this, what do you call it, detour is gonna be in place for about two weeks? It says, it's the anticipated work to be completed within a two week period.
Within two weeks, yeah.
Okay.
So it will mean that people who live south of the Mill Pond will have to go home by way of High Street, pretty much. That's a lot of people. But the work needs to be done. Public comment, any comments, sir?
Right so, they have given you, West Bath, no indication of any environmental study they have done, there's mucho money on the other side of that dam being wasted. It should either be flats to be dug, or it should be managed for coalogs, and that stink pile at the end of the stream ought to be done away with. It won't happen, it won't be fixed again for another forty years, I can't. They literally said, what, and it was about two years ago, that they would be holding hearings, they would be doing environmental impact studies, and they're doing nothing. Is West Bath willing to go talk to the representatives, or do we have to do it individually?
Where is, where is this?
Berry's Mill, that culvert.
Oh, okay, alright.
The titled dam behind.
Yeah.
It's used for, they're hauling coalogs out.
Yeah.
Fairly rightly none.
Yeah.
There's what, fifteen acres of flats, that if it was titled again, would be productive of clam pads. And that mess, my entire life of stagnant water, where it goes through the culvert on the town road?
Austin Road?
Austin Road now.
Okay.
I think, the track record of them maintaining any particular water level, I don't believe is very good. If you go to Warwick, you kind of get that idea. They replaced culverts over there, and now Route One floods. Not, not real good at the control of their water levels, I'm anticipating.
They have a flashing light?
Yeah.
So, your, your question is whether or not we have seen any environmental impact statements, and how the title flow is going to be maintained?
Whether they're going to put a set of gates in there that you can control, maintenance, maintain the water level. I can't believe they're not doing it without DMR's input, not that the DMR says any plantologists anymore, but there really should be, it's a once in forty year chance to make an environmental decision with what goes wrong with that coallog.
Well, I don't believe that we have any information.
No, we don't, this is the only correspondence I've had from them, but we certainly get in touch with them.
In case you hadn't guessed, I'm a little pissed.
So we can report to Mba that we've had a question from a concerned citizen?
Absolutely.
Very good question. I'm, I'm really surprised that if we have to put in this very elaborate system on Savida Road, that...
Yeah, as big a deal as the Department of Transportation makes out of virtually everything, I'm surprised they haven't initiated this on their own.
So, the concern will be conveyed? Other public comment?
Okay, then we have, we have an update on the tax applied property, the bidding to be, but Engerski Moore and Rockweed Road, first item of it. We have Engerski Moore. I included, this is just a draft version of what would appear for the sealed bid request, and what I need to know from you is how you want to calculate your minimum bid, and how much you want to request as earnest money, or a down payment.
Right.
There are different ways you can approach this. We can go through the process of calculating the total taxes that would have been due for the period of, for Engerski, for example, from 2010 forward, and come up with the entire amount that was due with interest. We can calculate the entire principal that would have been due, had been paid, or you can come up with some other number.
I, I am leaning toward whatever the tax bill would have been for each year from 2010 through to this year, and plus interest.
So include the interest.
Yeah, and then we'll get an idea of what that number looks like, I guess, before we decide.
Right. Yeah, that's something, didn't have time to calculate because of the holiday, but we can certainly come up with that figure.
It's looking like it's about...
The amount for Rockweed will be quite high.
Yeah.
That's from 2015 forward.
Yeah, that's about thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, oh here, down here, fifteen six.
Yeah, that's just through 2018.
Yeah. This will be about nineteen thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the Engerski Road, let's, let's, let's get that number together before we decide. Uh, the minimum bid, I guess.
Seems to me it should be, to do this kind of bid, sealed bid, we, we should do both the same. So taxes do not stipulate interest.
Well, yeah, I agree there, however...
There's a significant difference in the values of the properties.
Yeah, and, well, the Engerski Road more, old property, I went in there, I couldn't even find it, so...
It's, it's a trade-in.
So, but we're... Yeah, I suppose, I suppose, minimum bid, we can always do it again.
I mean, that's the most straightforward approach, and the one that I'm most familiar with.
Yeah.
Calculate all of the principal and interest through the current year, and put that forward as the minimum bid.
Yeah.
And then typically, you would request a certain percentage of that as a down payment.
What's, what's the kind of industry standard?
Well, it's usually five thousand dollars.
Yeah, you can do just a flat amount, if you want to do five thousand, that's fine, you can do five percent, whatever you're thinking.
Yeah, do whatever you want.
Yeah, it's your call, completely your call.
Yeah.
But whatever you decide to do, I would, if we find that that's a process that works for us, I think we should put it in policy and just do it, right, from this point forward, so we develop some questions ourselves.
I think the back taxes would be interesting, that's still...
It's looking like, it's looking like, um... Engerski Road's gonna be about, I guess, around the twelve thousand area, somewhere around there.
So what do we want to do about the minimum bid?
Well, let's get the, the actual number together first.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So I wanted to say, on the Engerski Moore, minimum bid twelve thousand? Or did we, what?
No, we would need to have to go through the process of actually calculating what is the interest, yeah.
Let me just guess, let me just guess, this is the...
Right.
You noticed that, huh?
Yeah, that's pretty intense.
I could have that for the next meeting, it would give you some time to contemplate, too.
Okay.
And if you'd like, you can also add an administrative fee, some towns do that, they'll add five hundred dollars, a thousand dollars on top of the what would have been due.
So we want to think of this as a long-term policy, not just these two?
Yeah, right, yeah, right.
Now, we're, we're going to be, we're going to be requesting bids for this to sell as a quit claim?
Right.
Okay.
It would definitely be, yeah, quit claim or release, Steve.
Okay, should, should we table this until we get the specifics of what those figures would be on each one?
Okay.
Correct, Steve, for both of the figures, do we want to add the administrative fee? Makes some sense to me.
Yeah, think about it, we'll talk about it next meeting.
Sir?
Have you proposed to advertise this?
It will be in the Times Record, on the website, and we'll also be notifying abouters. Can you think of another way that we can get information out?
No.
Okay, we want to do anything else with this tonight? Motion to table? What, let's do a motion to table then?
Alright, I'll start with it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're tabling both Engerski Moore and Rockweed. King's Point, Tax Met U-13, which is owned by the town. So the question is whether or not we're going to retain or dispose of the parcel. And since we talked about this last month, we've had some discussion about the current comprehensive plan, and if you look in your packet, you'd see highlighted, the current plan says, it is hoped that informal access may continue through, and that has been, this lot has been a way in which people have, shellfish harvesters have accessed the water and the beds. As I thought about it, and have discussed this a bit with the Marine Resources Committee, they, they indicated that they would really prefer that the town retain ownership of that lot.
I think we've, we've discussed it a little bit, I think it was last time, maybe it was the time before that, but seems to me that the town retaining the property is, benefits virtually all stakeholders, all parties that are stake in this use of this property, and if there's a need for some real estate for a sewer, septic field, or anything like that, the town can sort of grant an easement for that, I would think.
Well, there, as I understand it, there are two, there are two abutters who have, I think, a well and a piece of a septic system from past discussions, so if we give, if we give easements and retain ownership, then that covers, that covers those issues for those particular abutters.
Just so long as the easements make it clear that anything happens to either the well or a special septic system, that's the town.
It's the responsibility of the person who ex- or the owner of the easement. Mr. Henderson?
I think what you want to do is give a license present easement, a license temporary easement permanent.
Can you explain what the difference is to those of us who are not sure?
A license is, does not run with land, it runs with the owners. An easement is, is permanent, it just gives you more flexibility.
An easement is, you cannot...
Ultimately go back and say, we need that for town access, you need to move your septic system or, or drill another well, that's a permanent property right to whoever you give the easement to, a license is just as long as everybody agrees, it's revocable.
That's not a bad idea, actually.
Yeah.
You just did.
Yeah.
Yeah, then the town remains in control of the future, if adjustments need to be made, then the town can make adjustments.
Yeah. What do you think, Henry?
Gold star, Mr. Henderson.
I'm not sure I really understand the difference of the two, so remind one more time, no?
A license, a license is just a, an agreement to allow a use, it doesn't run with land. An easement is permanent, that's a, they own the possession of that easement, with a license, they don't own it, it's more like leasing.
Okay, so if a landowner wants to sell or give that to the next generation, does that continue to go with it?
An easement would, a license does not, licenses, you have the, the holder of the license, which would be the town, has the right to revoke that license. It's just cleaner for the owner than it is to pass off a permanent right.
Does protect us in case something comes up that we can't anticipate.
Right.
And then in the case of, if title changes, then the town can renegotiate a new license to the new owner.
That's my understanding.
The license isn't till you revoke it.
Right.
And you can issue another one to, another party, yeah.
What would the taxes be on this parcel where the town, tomorrow? Undeveloped as it is, what would the taxes be?
Yeah, I'm bringing that down, I think I could find it. Rod, you had a guess?
I, I thought, it'd be an assessment of sixty, sixty-seven, eighty thousand?
That's, would be the current assessment?
Yeah, that would be the current assessment.
So it'd be about six, seven hundred a year, six or seven hundred a year.
Yeah, it's gotta be about that, you know, yeah.
And, and how many people would be using this lot, that we would lose six or seven hundred a year in potential revenue, how many people would be using that, would have access to that, is, I didn't understand, would it just be people that are doing clamming, or would it be available to the rest of the citizenry? This is new to me, I don't really think about.
The water access apparently would be, would be available to anybody who could access it.
Or wants to access it.
It would be public land.
That satisfies, that satisfies the, that satisfies the requirement, the property has a plan, is one thing, another thing is, you're not losing six hundred a year, or six or seven hundred a year, because it's not generating six or seven hundred a year, it's just sitting there.
We've, we, the town has owned it since, at least since the forties. Oh, the town has owned it that long, okay, alright, I thought it was something you had gotten, something foreclosed on.
Nineteen forty-one.
Yes.
Question, Varon, if it goes sort of butter, you wouldn't get any, if it's sixty or seventy thousand for an independent law, if it goes sort of butter, assuming you'll be looking more like thirty to forty, because you wouldn't get a...
Well, I don't know if you'd count, count that down that much, I mean, I don't know what the base law is. Sometimes they do that, but most of the time, whatever they set value, is it based on the topography, any easements going through it, you know, if they've given easement through it, obviously that's gonna reduce the assessment.
Oh, it has a telephone, it's a telephone.
I mean, as the value is emerged law, with either one of the abutters, it's gonna...
Well, it can stand alone, the lot can stand alone.
It can, yeah.
It's a part of the law.
That's kind of a...
We haven't, we haven't collected any taxes on this lot since nineteen forty-one. I, I think, I think we're doing okay, and the value of, of the water access and the, and the flats, I think outweighs myself. So how do we want to proceed with this?
Question, oh, I'm sorry.
If there's one more question on the lot, I'm a little bit unfamiliar with it myself, but for access to the water, then would people park on this particular lot, is that, they would park, they would park on the town lot?
Yeah.
And then have access to the water?
People have done that, oh, habitually?
No, that's not correct.
The, according to the shellfish harvesters, they have used it in, in that way, so, and it would be available to them?
It's behind your lot, right?
That's right, that's, yeah.
There are at least two easements, well, I think two easements across that property that Kathy, Kathy has.
Right, one, one I recall from my time on the board, utilities.
Yes, there's a telephone pole.
No, but there's a right of way to the road across that property.
Yeah.
And, and at one time, there were, her property was made up of two lots, and they both had easements to the road, to the King's Point Road. So, those are undefined where they are, but they are, they're easements already across that property, and when you say access to the water, I'm not sure what, what you're talking about, access to the water.
For traffic, yeah.
There's no deed to the access from that property to the water.
No, the, the road was, was foreclosed with, with the rest of everything in the body of mine.
Say that again, Rod?
The road itself was foreclosed.
The road, King's Point Road is foreclosed?
And it's all private.
That's right, it's all private, so it's not foreclosed.
Yeah, they're private, right, you're gonna have a lot, you're gonna own a lot to get to the water.
So if the town owns the...
Move that part of the road from that town to the lot.
So then the town has the right to, to the water?
It's a private road.
Yeah, as long as they have that lot, as long as they have that lot, they move down and hide and, and use the access to the water, that's what the climbers are doing.
Well, the climbers were actually parking up at the head, at the intersection of Rosdale and King's Point, and then walking down.
Sure, too much to do that, to turn it.
What's that?
Wonder why they would do that?
Well, because that's the way they've been doing it, they've been doing it, they did it all, all spring. Well, they don't look at it.
For ten years, probably, at least.
Why would they do that?
To sell that lot, we would be eliminating all access, a one point of access to the water.
Yeah, I don't think this was. But the access is, like, to put a kayak, or that there's no boat ramp, or it's just, it's just how they walk?
Yeah.
Cause, I mean, that was where it was prior to the, the boat landing.
Right, access to the water is going to become more and more and more precious to the town. So, do we wish to retain ownership?
Are, are to make a motion early to retain ownership?
You have a second, a second to that motion? All in favor of retaining ownership? Further, can we do some further investigation about the licensing versus easement?
Definitely.
I'll contact Alan.
Okay, and, and we can make that decision about how we want to maintain that further down the line, if we, if we can have that by next meeting, that would be awesome.
Sure.
If Sally does something outrageous, like go on vacation or something.
Now that the town has decided to maintain ownership of the lot, you've discussed licensing and or easement for purposes of well or septic, and then you also said that there would be parking available... And then you also said that, uh, there will be parking available down there. Uh, so, I'm not sure if somebody put in a septic, that they would want somebody to park on top of the septic. And, uh, there might be a similar concern relative to placement of a well, because I believe wells and septics need at, at least a minimum one hundred foot separation. So there would be a, a little bit of a, um, research project to, uh, to get all that figured out.
Well, they're all on the east, on the westly side of, of this particular lot, so I don't see a problem with that. Uh, they already exist. So, if there was a problem of a setback between the well and the, and the septic, that, that's, that's the problem that the town didn't make.
We can discuss whatever the legal implications are with the town attorney.
Yeah.
And Will.
We'll discuss it with her, see what she says.
The third item on the business agenda is the discussion with the health officer concerning a property on the New Meadows Road. Ready, Rick?
Yeah.
We have information in our packets about that.
So we have a property that, I don't wanna say a complaint was made, but concerns may, um, obviously that's in your packet. Uh, the problem is, is on this, on this particular issue, I think we have three parties involved.
Um, we have the person that owns the building itself. We have the homeowner, and we have the person that brought the concern. Uh, pretty much what I'm coming up to you guys to ask for is just, uh, you know, I've been, I've found, like, a thing like that.
I do think there's a concern, I think it's more or less an abandoned property, but like I said, it's whose fault it is when it's abandoned. I don't know who's actually responsible for it. Um, it's a trailer, which I tried to find a different one, but it's been fine. So, one of those, I don't believe in a very good thing, I guess, is what I'm getting at. I think that the person that brought the concern with the town has pretty good case, you know, John Bean and I went and looked at the property. We had permission from the property owner to walk on the property, but not go inside the building. I definitely think that something needs to be done with the property that's there, whether we ask the, I don't know, if you're the owner of the trailer, I don't know whether you might be owner of the property, but at least board it out, figure out what's going on, and something, and find out who actually owns this, who is actually responsible for this building on, on the property.
There, there is, as I read it, there's, there's a question between the person who owns the property and the people, I mean, the, the real estate and the people who own the building.
So the, he, the, so gentleman, I guess, lived in the trailer forever, um, and paid next to nothing and rent, took care of his own utilities, that sort of thing. It's his trailer, the trailer was in his name, but this other family allowed him to keep the trailer on the property. He then moved into, I would say, a senior living center, but more or less a, a, a small apartment in town. And I think in his opinion of his property, there's value to this trailer. So he gave a letter to the owners of the land, giving them this trailer. There is no value to this trailer whatsoever. Um, they never retained it, like, they never, wanted this ladder, they just, they didn't want anything to do with it. I think their goal is to eventually sell the property, whoever buys the property is also responsible for removing the trailer. But the problem is, is if you look at the pictures, there's multiple oil tanks around there. Uh, John and I couldn't really search the property, but we did see blow doors, we saw oil filters, we saw stuff like that. There was a door opens to the property, there's an odor coming from the property, as if maybe he just moved out and that was it. Uh, I talked to animal control, who caught a lot of the cats that were at the property, and got the cats, we didn't really care what we do, but he got a lot of the cats out of there, so. I kinda feel bad for all three people involved here, I think, and you guys know what I'm talking about. I think the person that lived in the trailer really thought that it had some value, and he was doing a great thing by giving this ladder to them. I think it's a little of the actual man himself that didn't want anything to do with this trailer, and he just wanted to put it on this, but I also feel bad for the neighbor.
Uh-huh.
Um, and, you know, it's tough, tough situation to be in, it really is. And everybody through this whole thing is very cordial. I haven't talked to the owner of the trailer, but everybody's been super cordial and nice about it, and so really, I think we need to find out who's responsible for the trailer. And that's pretty much where it goes. You know, I thought originally it would be the property owner because of the ladder, but then, later on, I was told, I was told by the state health department that, I mean, I could give you a ladder right now, ownership of this building, but it wouldn't be anything. I don't have that right to do that, so.
Right.
You know, you'd have to accept it.
Yeah.
Want some history on that?
Yeah.
What happened was Courtney Stover, who owned the Stover place, little house across the street, Pat Maguire, used to whip Courtney. He let her whip that trailer on his land.
Yeah.
Since then, she sold it to Prokot.
Right.
And just the trailer, that's it, so. He may have tried to turn it over to Prestovas, but...
But they didn't have to accept it?
They, they wouldn't have to take it.
Right.
I can't, I couldn't find it in, not, we couldn't go inside, but we couldn't find it in, or, and I was gonna have the sheriff's office just run it to see who the owner of the, of the was. Apparently that's how mobile ones like that work, I didn't know that either, but, yeah. So I talked to everybody in this, except for the actual owner of the trailer, who I believe is the owner of the trailer. And he wasn't the original owner, and they were also talking about whether or not, and actually you can put in his name, yours and yours.
Yeah, trailers, trails are hard to, you know, I mean, they, sometimes they get, most of the time they don't.
They transfer to someone.
Just a car, that goes with the car.
If, uh, you sell, you sell it to somebody and you don't turn it over, it actually has a registration.
And you don't turn it over, then... You can't deed it if you, you do an appropriate foundation and pull the access on wheels or something.
There's, I was looking, and I just thought, that's enough, I was getting away to involve the trailer ownership here and who owns it. But I think the thing that is, you know, and I talked to the owner of the property, you know, we really, the owner of the property's daughter, who was representing her, she brought a good point. She said, you know, there's other homes around town, and there's other places that are falling down, but like I said, I explained to her is that somebody has to come to us and say something, and this guy, he did, and that's why we're looking into it. Um, I do think that, I don't know how it smelled, it's hot baby, I, cause I live down Pennsylvania, but it's, it's a mess in there, it's bad. There was an open door, and, you know, kids or something, they'd get in there, it just worries me. You know, if something's gonna happen to that, I, I do feel bad if the person involved, uh, opened it up.
It's been, the property has been a concern over the years, for sure. What are the, what, what are the legal rights and responsibilities of the town vis-à-vis this trailer that's apparently abandoned?
So I'm glad you're here, Rick, this has been really helpful to me, because now I know what questions we need to ask.
Yeah, I cut it, I cut it in there, cause I didn't...
Was there an issue with water as well? Do we know who's paying the taxes on it?
The owner of the home and the land separate?
Tax, it always, always paid, because it was valued, so, I don't know. And who sent me out of...
I think his exemption.
Yeah, the mother of the seventh best person.
But for his name, right?
Correct.
Yeah, but you never had to pay any actual taxes, because the exemption covered it.
But we never charged the Stovas for any of it?
They get actual tax for the land.
On the land. But not the trailer, but still make it his.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think there's tires there, there's, which I know other properties in town do have, but the, the neighbor actually then, under the rain, he sent pictures and sent some texts messages, he was just, can I have some copy of this? Which I think is in there, and he does get a lot of water runoff from it, he does, and he's been a very nice guy through this whole thing. Like, he, you know, he's, just brought up his concerns with it and, and stuff like that. Um, the one picture there shows, like, when John and I went, you know, in fact, it was not open, anybody could get in there.
Yeah.
And it, it looks like it might have been almost a forties type situation, persecution, like the town into a small apartment. The questions that I had, if we thought we should get the legal, are, and I don't, I don't know, um, you know, he technically owns the whole home. Does the town, is the town already having jurisdiction, you know, the property, which we do have? But then, if we do go in there and we make it safe, so kids can't get in there, or, or, you know, try to fix something on it, then a lien goes on, and who's the legal on? To the person that lived there, who owns the trailer, or, I have to copy it myself, you know, that's something they issue. Um, and I really think a lot of this is a civil matter. I really do, I think it's a civil matter between the, the trailer, whoever's name the trailer's in, has, which, that's, that's my opinion.
Well, the town doesn't really need it anymore, they wouldn't want anything to do with it, that's for sure. There's all links, and...
No.
There's, there's all kinds of problems.
If we, if we put a lien, if we, the town puts a lien on it, then we become responsible for taking care of the property.
That's, yeah.
And with, I mean, the only thing with you, if they did sell the property, and they came in there and just cleaned it up, that would be fine. I know John's dealt with it as the fire chief in the past, and got, actually, I think he got some prices on it, and it removed, which didn't tell much to me, but it still, it's always a lot of money, but, yeah. So, nobody's owning that trailer, I don't think you can.
No, it's not, it's certainly not habitable, which is why eventually the former resident left.
I think you're right, Rick, this, this is for the most part a civil matter, but I also have a sneaky suspicion we're gonna be dealing with this, just like we've been dealing with an abandoned boat.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Oh, mobile boat ended up at the church.
And I, I do, I do feel bad for, for the owner, I do.
Yeah.
It's, it's tough, you know, and I, I also feel bad for the, the property owner, and, you know, I was thankful that I'll be able to deal with her daughter as opposed to her, which was fine, and they were fine. And anyone that's coming inside the property, which is okay, but it's, uh, it's a mess, and they didn't make it worse.
Yeah, and it's become so overgrown. I had to look carefully when I drove by the other day, to see if it was still there.
The neighbor actually, you know, started moving along, and was asked to not build a property anymore, just to try to keep the ice and other stuff, yeah, down. And I didn't realize how wet it is right currently behind it, it was the first I'd ever gone down there, but...
Old scene runs through there.
Yeah, there's old oil tanks, there's blow doors and stuff there, so, I mean, it's not the only property in town that's like that, but...
What's the, what's the odor smell like? Smell like just, uh, mold?
Lots of cats.
Okay, I think, I wanna say they caught over sixty cats, and there's something like that.
No, I weren't.
I think that there's, I think, it smells like, um, people matter, or, or...
Yeah.
From my full-time job, I do remember going in there, but I can't talk about that too much, but it's not the nicest of things, I see that for sure.
Uh, I mean, I think we have to do something, whether or not we even just write a letter and say that this is, you know, a civil matter. It's not a civil matter with the neighbor, I mean, we have to be in the neighbor's best interest, as the town, but I think it's a civil matter to whoever this trailer's name is in, and if it's in the original one.
And if you take away the trail, you know, you get somebody to take it away, then doesn't Prestovas become responsible for the cleanup of the lot?
Well, there is a subject.
There's the wells, I don't know, it's seawater, right?
Yes, there is.
So would that, so you consider the landowners subject?
Yeah, yes.
I would, yeah, everything that would be the land, but what's up with the girl?
Everything but the trailer.
And the butters concerned at the septic, he thought that because it was a trailer, water was left to run in the winter, and it would then bubble over, and that was part of the issue with this water coming in his. I'm not a septic person, I didn't get involved in that, that would have to be something that would go to John at the time, but at the time, we had those guy, when John and I were out there, I was just thankful that he actually was there.
Yeah.
You know, people had to go with me, and he's more familiar with the property than I am, but I think we have to do something, but I think it's ninety percent civil, I really do. I mean, you can't just abandon something on somebody's property, it doesn't matter, I don't want any more here, you can have it, I think we can do that, you know?
Um, can you check with Sally about what the town's rights and responsibilities, et cetera, et cetera, are? Um, at least we have clarification from the town's perspective, and I think that's fact number one. Uh, I suspect we, we may have further discussion.
I think it's gonna end up being more codes issued than...
Yeah.
Yeah, cause they, the code would have to condemn it anyway, or you, one of you...
One of us would, right, we have to condemn, condemn the property completely. And we could condemn it, we could condemn the property, maybe a lock, lock, but we could condemn a property, cause there's nobody on it, I mean, you know, you could do that, but we could condemn the property, but that's not technically the issue.
Right.
So, I mean, just play it out for the wrong.
Yeah, I mean, we would condemn the property, we'd probably throw a padlock on that back door, which would be twelve bucks.
But you condemn it, it's not... Attractive nuisance, it's an attractive nuisance, we do have to, like, to take, to compel parties to move on this.
You know, and there's so many, like I said, you know, like, the town actually does come in there and does some cleanup, or does anything, but the lien would go against the property, and, you know, obviously, the Stovers don't like that, they initially sell the property, and they don't want to have this lien sort of against it. You know, I think it just makes everybody happy, which is, how do we do this, you know? If I understand it, I'm getting out of Clayton, he's not gonna...
Yeah.
I don't know, if you get any of that from administration, he's a veteran, I don't want that to help him out.
That may be another inquiry to make, yeah.
I love it.
They've had, they've had, they've had contact with him.
I know, John said it was, I think, between two, three thousand, the trailer, they had it.
It's too bad, because he wanted quite a lot.
It's actually not as far as I thought it would be.
No, that's, that was years ago.
Yeah.
I know.
So I think, uh, since I, cause we need permission to talk to, we know about this, I think that's our best bet, is to get their opinion on this.
So maybe we need to ask if he kept, because he, at one point, he did have a significant amount of money. Hmm, so I think we need to check that avenue too, because I know for a fact that he wanted a significant amount of money from the waters.
Okay, so, I've heard that too, I'm a class of the state, um, we can't really get any other opinions, I mean, I, I...
If we can't ask him as a town if he has enough money to clean up or if he's willing?
If he isn't, we...
Ask, he can say no.
He can say, he can say no, and...
And then what?
It's probably a question I'm gonna ask, honestly, you, you gotta do what's the same for everybody, and that would be to figure out exactly what to do with this property, and then...
But he might be willing to work with, I think.
Yeah, right, we're gonna figure out.
You know, you can just say, I'm out of there, it's your problem, but...
Which I don't think he does, I think, the trailer didn't, he allowed the trailer to get to that point, and I think that...
And maybe he really thinks he gave it.
I, yeah, I think that'd be...
Yeah, he thought it was a kindness, right.
So that's where that, pretty much stands, like I said, everybody's been super cordial through this whole thing. You know, they could bring up a good point, that there are other properties in town, and I said, well, that's fine, so if it brings our attention, we'll look at it, maybe, so...
But if I lived next to a property that smelled like urine and had sixty cats, I'd be calling me?
Yeah, yeah, every day. And the neighbor was kinda nice, and he was like, I don't know what to do with the cats, I don't know if I'd care what he had cats, you know, cats, but it's just, you know, I can remember crying by there, I heard the cats in the roof, and...
Bruin?
Yeah, everything, yeah, they were everywhere out there, it was...
And that's why we dated Coach Tade.
They do have a feral cat program for our cats, which I think those were probably...
Trailer cats, though?
Apparently you dumped sixty old cats.
Trailer park cats.
Do you want this, if you have any, some pictures?
Thank you.
Ordinance fourteen point six addresses dust, fumes, vapors, gases, odors, layer, et cetera.
Vapors.
Subparagraph Bravo of ordinance fourteen point six says, "No land use or establishment shall be permitted to produce offensive or harmful odors beyond the slot lines."
So, we read that, I talked to the health officer, uh, the state health officer, um, Draxel White about that. He said, it's a, it's a really poorly written, because who determines what is offensive?
Some people might like that.
Is that an award ordinance, or?
No.
No?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a...
It's almost bath ordinance.
Down with the bath.
Which is almost identical to what the state ordinance...
Fourteen point six paragraph B.
But it's, but it's not a good order.
No, it's not.
No, because what's, what's offensive?
Right.
You know, I mean, that, that was one of the things we looked at, I gave a copy of all that to, to Draxel at the state, and to see exactly what, you know...
Well, we could live next door to a bunch of horses, and that smell could be very offensive to me. Yeah.
Rodney, if you're gonna leave Homestead on there, so you don't end up getting it?
All right, so what, what do we, what do we need to do?
Good tip, talk to the.
We need to talk to the attorney.
You better leave Homestead on there.
So we refer this to the attorney and, and get, um, the, the attorney's best wisdom, and proceed from what the attorney's best, best wisdom is.
We need to figure out, we need to figure out who actually owns.
I'll get any bets.
And ordinance needs to be there.
We know who owns the land.
Yeah, that's clear. So Sally will give us a quick clue as to what we ought to do.
Yeah, there won't be any agreement on who owns the trailer.
And let's hope it'll be anymore of that humidity, that one property.
How long is it?
Landowners responsible.
How long is it?
The trailer?
Oh, how big is it, Rick?
Yeah, is it over a magical thirty-three feet?
I don't think so, it's a, it's a whole.
It's been there for years, I saw.
Does it smell like?
The weight of the trailer?
Yeah, because that test is.
Thirty-eight, something like that, boy. Yeah. Put that long, long while it was a problem, can't hold it any other down there, I mean, so.
A lot's changed too, because three years ago, we changed that commercial property.
Right.
So, I mean, that, I think, changed some of the value of it, and what could, could, could go in there, and. You know, so when Jake had to buy it, and we, you know, it shouldn't be commercial anyway, but, you know, when we made commercial property in town years and years ago, we did the minimum that was required to do, remember? And then we just kinda looked at it, that across the street is commercial, you know, and, which I think was a good idea, we did that at the time, but I think that in the mind of the property owner, that changed the value quite a bit, and I don't hope they like the numbers that realtors are really telling them, it's worse, because it is a wet piece of property, you know. You need to go from there, it's, it's not just a simple, hey, you own this, this is what needs to be done, or the town's between to deal with it, so, well, you own this, but you own this, and are you to live next to it? And that's, that stands, so.
Ronnie, if you truly do not know, then you can do it to party in possession, when they, when they start having to pay taxes on it, they may be more inclined. I will check, I guess, 'cause, uh, obviously, Pat, my wife, said she sold it to him.
Under, under that party possession, isn't there, is there a timeframe on that, though?
Well, usually, I dealt with a lot of them in boat man, but usually, if they were selling a, a mobile home, they would come in with a written note and the date on it, and they would, they would put it in book. And, but in this particular case, I don't know, I think Pat probably never signed anything, but I can check. But she did tell me she sold it to him, I remember that, but she wasn't there to tell him, oh, you know, you guys know that. But I, from my point of view, the trailer is and the land, two separate issues. The trailer's got to go first, once the trailer's gone, and then the land becomes an issue, and then that's lightens up, uh, property completely once he gets rid of that trailer.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was great report, very thorough, thank you very much.
Thanks, Doc.
Good night.
Good night. This is item four, town hall cleaning bid specifications. So this is what we requested, um, last meeting, um. If you can think of anything to add or clarify?
Has our current chair looked at this to see whether or not this covers this?
No, I came up with this today, so she has.
Can you take a quick look?
Sure. The most recent bid packet I downed was in two thousand thirteen, so that's what I followed in creating this.
You found one?
That was good. Re- research skills, check.
Yeah, that's good.
You wanna say where?
Do you think of anything else that should be happening around here? You're the most aware of the building.
My only question on was if we were providing supplies and equipment, or if they would provide.
Oh, the equipment, I didn't think about the equipment.
Like our vacuum cleaner, and if they would do their own vacuum cleaner, because if it broke, that situation.
I think I would want them to provide their own, what do you think?
I think it would be smart to have them provide all of their own cleaning supplies so that we're not ordering, that they're more responsible for it.
Okay, I can clarify that.
We can give them a closet to store the stuff in.
Yeah.
Other jobs too?
Yeah.
Yes.
They choose to leave stuff here.
And we can obviously continue to provide the paper towels and toilet paper, and these, obviously.
So, office supplies. Shall we let it go with the addition of stipulation that the person, that the service provides its own equipment?
Okay, availables? Supply and equipment.
Supplies and equipment. Are there any chemicals that we don't want to be used?
I always recommended not using bleach products in the toilets.
I'll go with that, too.
Yeah.
Oh, because of the preservation of the toilets?
Yeah, although most of it's been replaced, it's probably still the best practice.
After the pres- preservation of this?
I think it was originally for the pipes, which had been, I guess, already replaced, but I think with the new water filtration, there isn't any need to start using.
Double ammonia.
Yeah, something, yeah.
It's all right. Yeah.
We could specify green, green chemicals.
Yes, 'cause remember, telephone towers are lethal thirdages.
Body is wet.
Roundup.
That's funny, but it's not.
We won't keep the roundup one, unless the repairs are done. Okay, so, motion to accept as amended?
Ooh.
Seconded, all in favor? And you can get that out ASAP? Um, I think the amendments shouldn't take long, we could stick to that timetable. Yeah, I think so, should be fine. Okay, okay, now, the other, um, item of business, um, we have the committee structures and procedures. This is a fairly long, don't have that hand up over here, too. Yes, I'm sorry.
Remember the, what is it, sixteen or twenty million dollar comma? Uh, the legislature failed to put the comma in.
Yes.
The ordinance that we passed doing editorial, that, that really should be put back in. I didn't object because trading one bad ordinance for another is, is no problem, but you really ought to run that through and bless that again at a town meeting. Because you, because editorial comments can make a big difference.
To what are you referring?
Remember the, in the town meeting?
Yeah.
You, you passed one amendment which was editorial.
Okay, yeah.
Run it back around the clock again, because one comma was a twenty million dollar difference. So, when you do editorials next time, put them all back in again.
All right. You.
I'm a stickler.
Yeah, I guess, I'm just not following you, I'll have to have somebody explain it.
Okay. During the town meetings, we, we did, we passed an editorial only zoning changes.
Right, the corrections.
Corrections and error, well, if you look at what happened when the legislature left out one comma, which was twenty million dollars worth of funding difference for some department.
Mm-hmm.
Commas make difference, editorials make a difference.
Mm-hmm.
And without going through the proper hearing sequence that you did before to do for the next article down, you run that risk, and the simple thing to do is just paper.
Put it out there again.
Paper it again, text next year.
Okay, I got it, thank you. Okay. Back to business item five. My suggestion at, um, this point in time is that because it is a long document, that we table this so that we can have, um, the next couple of weeks to take a look at it, to, to, to study it thoroughly.
Yeah, it could be fodder for a workshop, two or three.
That's a capital idea. I would like to, uh.
'Cause there's, there's some, um, fairly significant changes proposed, so.
Yeah, that's pretty heavy, heavy duty stuff in here.
So we, we might wanna take this, um, piece by piece as we go, or to do a workshop on that. Which brings us to item number six.
We should vote the table, though.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll, I'm gonna have a motion.
Motion to table, accepted, all in favor? It is tabled, can I ask what is item number five? Item number five is, um.
It's a draft policy, or?
A draft, um, policy about committee procedures. Thank you. And, um, and structures.
Is that something, do you post it online so people can read it?
I think that's a good idea.
If you want to.
Yeah.
Let's, let's.
Let's throw it up there so people can take a look at it.
You think they're not gonna come here and talk about it, they might look at it for the first time.
Well, they might, right. And this is item six, um, see if we're interested in scheduling workshops to review policies, procedures, um, to, with other, um, boards and committees through a few years. In our unending quest to further communication among all of us who have to make decisions.
And get things in writing, please.
And get things in writing, yes.
As I said before, I would like to see one of us attend as many of these boards and committees as possible.
Yeah, the, the procedures that I brought up includes that.
Includes them. Each, each of the select board members serving as liaison to one of the committees. I think it's real important for continuity, for consistency, for information.
Absolutely.
There's too much disconnect currently.
I like the idea of, of having a schedule and set that up, um, can we ask you to facilitate that with the various chair, with the various committees?
We certainly do that.
Come back, um, with us to, uh, to set some dates. Okay, what did you have in mind for dates, do you want it at your regular meetings, um, on an alternate evening when nobody's meeting, at the committee's meeting? The committee's usual meeting time? What do you think would work?
I think, for instance, the planning board probably needs to have a separate night if, if they would, because they have detailed business. Not sure that marine resources needs the same, um, time, so that probably that could be done i- in a meeting.
Okay.
So, maybe check with, with the chair. My personal preference would be if we could do them in conjunction with our meetings, but, um, people, I've noticed have lives.
Really?
Competing meetings?
Hmm.
Huh, I know.
Ooh, that's not good.
I know, I, I, I know, I can't imagine people having anything more important to do on any given day than to attend to town business, but I've noticed occasionally that happens.
One item that really doesn't involve the other boards and committees is the human resources manual. Um, I would like to get that in place as soon as we can, or some iteration of it, that, I know, it's super long. But I think that we need to talk about that soon. Notebook, Peter, is a notebook better?
Manifesto, how about that?
Yeah, I've been writing the manifestos and moving the room around.
Yeah, you know, you owe me in human resources.
It's his favorite, um, if we, why don't we do that first? Um, have you, do you still have your copies?
We have copies.
Perhaps the first thing to do would be to, to make available, um, fresh copies. Can we do that, like, next meeting, do workshop after the post official business?
Yeah.
Or are you still? Madeline ran right home and read it, gave me edits the next day.
Because there is nothing more important.
Than human resources.
Or town business.
Right, that's what I'm told. Yeah, that's what I'm told.
Oh, do you wanna hold that to August?
Well, on one hand, it's summertime, but on the other hand, after Labor Day, uh, you know, August or after Labor Day, things start to get busy. I mean, probably ought to take care of it now.
Yeah, sometime this summer, September first is my target date, so as long as you can get it done by then, we're all good.
Yeah, 'cause it, after, you know, after Labor Day, then you start, you get into the holidays, and then after that's budget season, and then here we are again.
Um, let's. The circle of life, next meeting, sounds good.
Let's, um, let's take the first crack at it at the next meeting, and, um, each of us can pick up fresh copy in the, in the meantime. Can, um, is it convenient for you and us to get here in office hour time? Or should we make a special arrangement for either of you, I mean, glad you're working crazy hours.
Well, that's on our time, um, in theory.
In theory?
I can make it on, um, most Wednesdays, or I can make plans to make it on most Thursday.
Okay. Otherwise, we could fleet the mail.
Yeah.
Right now, it's crazy for me because it's contract season.
I'm making it.
Yeah. That makes sense, just maybe.
Or you can email it. Does that work for you?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll email it.
Email work for you?
Yeah, yeah. I'll look forward.
And then you check with the various committee chairs to see what would work for them. And, um.
Oh, when, when you email it, would you mind to send me a text?
I will.
And that'll just go and get it out of the email.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't actually have a computer anymore, so I have a phone. See, I don't, I don't actually have a computer anymore, so I have a phone.
Okay. It occurred to me after we adjourned last week that we had made a decision during the executive session and hadn't, a book that we'd come out of the session, the executive session, to formalize that vote. So, what we need to do is formalize the vote on the three-year contract.
Well, maybe it checks my mind then.
Well, if you have, if you have, this would be the time to make it known.
When I draw a blank, I can't promise I didn't formalize that vote.
We thought we'd get away with it, so we just...
I would stick with it as well. It's not necessarily entirely Hennessy trade, but every now and again, I think we should do things by...
Well, I, I make a motion that we, we uphold our settlement decision from the last meeting and finally put this issue to bed.
I second that motion. All in favor of formalizing this contract. Alright, we have done that. Excellent.
I have one more tiny item. I've got a message from Corey Wallace today, who's doing lawn care this time around, and he said the cemeteries need some extra attention. They're quite messy, he's running into rocks. He's wondering if we would pay him to do the little bit of extra work to clean up the cemeteries before he can mow. I don't have a figure from him, but I don't think it would be a huge amount of money. I can find out.
We are in rough shape.
Yeah.
Let's get a dollar figure before we...
Okay, get the dollar figure and then talk about it.
I'm thinking that the cemetery work was in his contract, but...
Yeah, the mowing piece, but I guess there's been no cleanup.
But the cemetery committee has approached us.
Then we, we did appropriate some.
So, let's see what he, let's see what he has in mind.
Okay.
He probably inherited a mess.
Yes, I think he probably did. I think it's going to take a while before we really get the cemeteries to the place that we, we...
That they need to be.
And that we're responsible for.
That's only recently, did we take it under the order?
Yes, that is true. We have only just recently found out that, you know... Is there any other other? Sir.
Looking for an update.
Looking for an update on your boundary?
Yes, the boundary. I contacted Sally Daggett, our attorney. She kind of wondered how this even came about, and didn't seem to think it was a big deal. So, she advised me to start at the beginning and go through the entire process. You talking to Ron, Ron talking to me, you talking to the selectmen, and approaching it that way. Other than that, she didn't provide much feedback.
Well, my feedback would be a little rude. Her job is to execute, not to decide policy, but that's another matter. Hey, Ron, we talked about this for three, four ye- five years now.
Town line?
The, the line between Bath and... Yeah. There's a parking lot in, in Bath that West Bath has got the line on, and Bath has got the line on the other side. There's a house sitting in the middle. There's possibly one or two other houses sitting in the middle. And by the way, we're building a high school.
On the, on the questionable line?
Yes, and we're having a battle about where the road is, the famous road, as well. So, there's more than enough questions, and there's a taxpayer who can't get the planning board to act because we don't know where the line is.
She did say if we want, if the selectmen decided to pursue it, that our next step would be to approach the city of Bath.
Commissioners?
Why?
The commissioners?
No, she said the city of Bath.
She needs to read the law. If there is, all she has to do is give them notice. The city of Bath is going to talk to Barbara, I mean, going to talk to assessing, who is going to say, to Brenda, who is going to say, "I don't want to do it until my reval is over," because that's what she told me. Too bad.
So, let's get that as an official response. We, they just talked. So, if you talk to the city of Bath and she tells you that she wants her reval you done, then, then we've talked, and then it goes to the commissioners.
Okay.
So, let's, let's expedite that.
Okay, that's fine, as long as I have direction from you to move forward.
Before we have a crime on the, on the high school parking, on the high school campus, and nobody knows which law enforcement to call.
Okay.
Before Ronnie gets stuck in the middle with, "Hey, where's my town line?"
Ronnie would never get caught. So, yes.
Because I love what they did to us, and that, that particular, the piece that probably went back a lot that was intrigeral, and they sold it, and we can't give you a money out of it.
I'm talking about the, the parking lot that they're using?
Could be, wherever the town line goes through, I mean, there was a piece in West Bath that was sold to Irish you one that was intrigeral.
Yeah.
I think, I'm, I'm thinking that it's part of the, the school.
No, I, I'm talking about the, their actual ongoing park. If you look, West Bath actually, where we draw the line.
Yeah.
We are in their parking lot, paved parking lot.
Yeah.
Where they draw the line, they are in outer woods, so...
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know, I gotta, I haven't been up there to look at it very.
Okay.
But I haven't been in contact with, with, obviously. And he says, here's a, here's a survey is going to contact me, I haven't heard anything from him yet. To discuss how he surveyed it, so...
The survey that you showed me, that survey picked up Bass Quine, which is probably a hundred, a hundred and fifty feet of indoor West Bath.
Well, that's possible, yeah. I haven't looked at it that close. It's possible.
We're in the process.
Right.
I would just like to somehow emphasize in the DOT that they should give us more notice in what's going on with the cover.
Right.
What, what cover it's going to be, how it's going to affect the water level. Is it going to be higher? Is it a flood tide that covers almost full down? So, what are they gonna, they, they need to get the town information. They showed up here for the stop light and discussed that. The least they could have, the least they could have done is show up here with that cover.
Yeah.
They should come to a meeting and explain what's going on.
Well, it needs to be an environmental study.
Well, it's, they could really, it's a can of worms, and the town should know what's going on.
Well, I received an email on July second.
I know, that's, that's not right. That's just not right.
That is going to adversely affect the folks who run the campground down Meadowbrook, and all of us who use the road?
Well, it could affect the whole lake, the whole river.
And the, the great pond is, I believe, in the custody of DMR, and what do they have, what have they to say about this?
So, they need to, they need to come to a meeting and tell us what they've done.
Before they, before they put their equipment in the road.
Even if it's a special night.
Shaiman Kray might be a good contact for that. She works closely with the DOT.
But even if they could, they could come on a special night, even next week, or two weeks from now, so we know what's going on.
Anticipate mid-July.
That's right, maybe next week. We meet with DOT first.
They, perhaps they need to push it into, like I say, winter, when it should be done, rather than smack in the middle of summer season, you know? They held, they held two or three meetings when they went to rebuild the little bridge at the fire end of Meadow's Lake.
Yeah, I wondered about the urgency all of a sudden.
Well, they should tell us that, then.
Yeah.
And we driving off across the unsafe road right now.
Right.
There's a lot of dump trucks, wheel is going down, the triax is going down there.
Because I've never, I've never experienced DOT acting that personally.
So, they need, they've got the town information.
Yeah.
Because we... We can, there's a limited amount to how...
It's a stately road, right.
But they can't do it. We can file, we can file a complaint with DEP if we need to, to help stop everything.
It's also DEP, DMR?
Everybody. The whole alphabet, yeah, we, we can, the state can't run roughshod over us when environmental...
Unless there's something they're not telling us.
In which case they will tell us, because I guess it's not safe. I don't want to go through.
Well, there's a lot of heavy trucks using that.
Yeah.
Then they should close it.
And let us know what's going on.
I think we should, we should ask them for their, the project is scheduled, so obviously there has been an environmental study done. Wouldn't you think? We won't see it.
My guess is that they do have all their permits in hand, but we don't, still, it's just a guess.
We're going to live with it in the height of summer.
Yeah.
And I, I would want to know what's going to happen to the co-bogs myself.
Well, it's the whole thing, the whole estuary is going to change.
Yeah.
We've given much information, do we?
Nope, nope.
Seriously, that's all we got.
We have some maps.
With a map.
Not even a thank you.
Maps are good.
A color map, did I mention there are colors?
Well, the state makes some pretty...
There's also going to be a sign.
Maybe we should go down and make sure they're replacing the right caliber. Maybe this isn't even very smel road, maybe this...
And the idea is, suppose those corrugated covers don't last very long.
Couldn't they put the number on it? Did anybody check and make sure it's four, six, one, seven?
So, they replaced it with the same type of cover? What did they replace it with? The same size?
They ought to be replacing it, at the very least, with one of the big covers that they're making us put in at Sabina.
Cement cover, fourteen feet wide and seventeen.
Well, it should be, it should be deeper than that.
But there's a lot of information we need to find out. We should find out. Good luck.
Um, if you contact...
They should give us, they should give us at least as much attention as... They should give us at least as much attention as they gave that streetlight.
Yeah, really.
The one that couldn't move without.
Right.
That streetlight, the, the traffic, the traffic light.
Yeah.
Yeah. Someone ran that stop sign the other day. When I was turning to go to Brunswick, I was not impressed.
I think, I think this stop light becomes more and more, obviously, a need as the days go by, but, so are the environmental concerns about the estuary. Are there other things that we absolutely have to deal with tonight, or shall we adjourn and go home?
Let's go home.
Let's adjourn and go home. All in favor? Thank you, everybody, for active participation in town affairs. Again, ma'am.